November 22, 2021, Regdor Wassila City Council meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have any personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard? Here. Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Vlach?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
There is a quorum, Madam Mayor, with councilmembers Sullivan Leonard and Graham participating in person, and councilmembers Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey participating telephonically.
Thank you, ma'am. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And councilperson Leonard, would you lead us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Head by hand, it was kind of hard.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. I have a voice, which I'm sure you're aware of.
No.
Two things here I wanted to look at. I wanted to pull 8.2, 0.3, Ordinance Serial Number 2124, and 8.3, 0.2, Resolution 2129. Thank you.
2129 and the other one, Mr. Graham?
2124 and 29. Thank you.
Then, is there any objection to the amended agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as amended. We are on to special orders of the day. Recognizing small business. The City of Wassila proclamation, recognizing small business Saturday, whereas the City of Wassila celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States that represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small business employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Eighty-eight percent of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small business in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. Whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small. Eighty-five percent of them also encouraged friends and family to do so. And whereas, 56% of shoppers reported that shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendations. And whereas, the City of Wassila supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Glenda D. Ledford, Mayor of the City of Wassila, do hereby proclaim November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year dated this 22nd day of November 2021. We are on to Commissions and Agency Reports. Archie, do you have a, on planning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would you please?
Yes, so that the previous meeting, Planning Commission got through their landscaping review and revision, so you'll be seeing that at a council meeting in the near future. And the next meeting in December, and that is on the 14th, the agenda includes the CIP recommendations to come to council, an airport lease extension, and a body art studio in the downtown overlay.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions for Archie?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Archie. I believe at the last meeting, or the meeting before last, I had asked about the sign at the Payless Auto Sales. Have you heard anything of that?
Yeah, we looked at the sign. I didn't get a final determination if that meets the criteria for a wall sign. The light itself isn't an issue.
So, at this point, it's under review?
Right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a representative, a student representative from Burchell High School? Would you come forward and give your report, please? State your name for the council.
Kiara Holt.
Connor Grue.
Good evening, Mayor Ledford and council members. My name is Kiara.
And my name is Connor.
The student council has successfully planned a Thanksgiving box handout scheduled for tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and a pie giveaway scheduled for Wednesday to the students.
We have additions to the, these trimester, this trimester's after-school programs, which is archery. For archery, you get half credit for an elective.
With winter break and the end of the semester, one, heading our way, we are trying to wrap up the current quarter two classes.
On December 9, at 6:00 PM, Burchell High School will hold a special screening of the documentary at Colony High School's auditorium to open up a dialogue between local families, community leaders, and experts. This event will feature a viewing of the film, followed by an informative panel discussion led by Shelley Lincoln, Burchell High School Principal, and Aleah Hall, Mental Health and Behavioral Health Coordinator.
Thank you for giving us this time to share our current events happening at Burchell.
Thank you so much for coming. Council, any questions for the students?
I have one question, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. You mentioned the documentary coming up. I didn't hear the name of the film that's going to be screened.
I don't know exactly, but I could have Ms. Lincoln send you guys in more information. This is just what she told us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next month. There are two public hearings this evening. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the title of the first ordinance.
Ordinance Serial Number 2120, Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget by Appropriating $30,000 from the General Fund Fund Balance for Building Security Risk Assessments.
The public hearing on Ordinance Serial Number 2120 is open. Anyone that would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last names. You have three minutes. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2120?
Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2120.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Leonard and seconded by Councilmember Graham to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2120. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Calling.
Yes, ma'am. Are we going to have the administration give an overview of this particular ordinance?
Sure.
If so, could they please?
Troy?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
One obvious nose.
Yeah, so this was, we had an incident this summer which isn't out of the ordinary. It doesn't happen a lot, but we'll get a citizen in whose actions will cause staff to generate a 911 call because they don't feel safe. So, the deputy administrator reached out to a consulting firm to do an assessment on City Hall, the library, and the museum, to see what, call them, simple measures could be done to improve the safety in the buildings. And that's what this funding does.
And through the mayor, can you describe some of those safety aspects that you're looking at through the public facilities?
That's why we hired a consultant here, because we brainstormed at staff level. Chief had some ideas, for instance, the mayor's office to put, lack of a better term, fog up on the see-through function of her door, so you just can't look in, for instance.
Okay.
But yeah, we don't know. So, this was brought forward for someone who doesn't know.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 2120.
Councilmember Harvey, how do you vote? Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Vlach? The motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the last ordinance under public hearing.
Ordinance Serial Number 2122, Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget by Appropriating $27,000 from the Sewer Fund Fund Balance and $27,000 from the Water Fund Fund Balance for Hurley Circle Utility Extensions Engineering Services.
The public hearing on Ordinance Serial Number 2122 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2122?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Graham moves to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2122.
Is there a second?
Second by Councilman Johnson.
It has been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2122. Is there discussion? Hearing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 2122.
Councilmember Vlach, how do you vote? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
Thank you. We are on to persons to be heard. The first one up is Nancy Ricken.
It's not Richard without a D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rashar.
Rashar. I won't promise you a thing about pronouncing these names. Would you come up?
Don't mind, I'll sit on my walk because it's easier for me to get up and down.
Okay, we'll do that.
Things are moving fast for me. I've never been to one of your meetings before.
You're doing fine.
My name is Nancy Rashar, and I'm here to speak in support of the COVID grant to Wassila Senior Center. As you can see, I am not able to get around easy. I cannot drive due to ongoing surgeries, five more in the next couple of years, and I desperately depend on public transportation. I utilized their bus temporarily while I had a grant last year, and then during COVID, their driver quit and the funds ran out. So, I was left with Alaska Cab at $3 a mile, so almost $100 a week to go to my physical therapy and surgeon appointments, or public transit. And I kept having problems getting scheduled with them, and finally I understood to get an appointment scheduled, you've got to call 10 days to two weeks in advance, and then it takes a moment to work it in and schedule you. And I find myself waiting at the doctor's office sometimes an hour before my appointment, and waiting an hour, hour and a half after, because their schedules are so tight and they've got to get everybody everywhere. So, Wassi desperately needs transportation for the seniors there. More and more of them are becoming unable to get around easy. I know a couple that are going to be in a wheelchair within the next year. And Wassila is growing exponentially, and there's just a real crying need for as much public transportation as we can get. Wassi's done a tremendous job of meeting the needs of the seniors. I moved in from the bush three years ago, and I've just been overwhelmed with what they do for seniors, and their heart is so much into making our lives better. But I hope you will give serious thought to the funding to help them, because these transportation services is really critical over there.
Okay, and next we have Pat Rayber.
I'm coming, ma'am.
You have to come up here.
Be sure the mic is in your direction.
And please state your first and last name for the record.
Okay, Patty Rayber. Oh, okay. I just think that it's very important that we do have a vehicle that's available to us seniors for doctor's appointments and emergencies. Like Nancy said, you know, by the time that, you know, we wave around for taxi cabs and everything, it's costing us like $100 a month. And it's just very important. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol.
My name is Carol Rice, and I'm a longtime resident of Wassi and of Alaska. And I am very fortunate in that I have my own vehicle, but I always won't, I won't always have my own vehicle. And I live among seniors, and many of them don't have transportation, who depend on transportation to get to their doctors, to their physical therapy, as you've just been told, and many other things that we, as people who are car-driving people, take for granted. So, I really hope that you will support Wassi in having a vehicle to help out our seniors. Many of them are so desperate. I've talked to people in my relationship with Wassi over the years who live, not unlike Nancy, who you just heard from, in the bush, but not so far out as to be isolated, but with no transportation available, up Pittman Road and places like that where they still have homes and they still need help getting around. And I'm hoping that you will continue to support us in making this a fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Jason Marble.
Good evening, Jason Marble. Mayor Ledford may have permission to approach with one of these.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor Ledford, City Council members. First of all, I just want to thank you for your service to our community. The service that you provide is fantastic, so thank you. So, I'm here on behalf of Wassila High School, I'm the principal of Wassila High School, and I'm here on behalf of Wassila High School to propose renaming Cruzy Street to Warrior Way. So, there's a tremendous pride in our community regarding Wassila High School. We have rich traditions, exceptional academic and athletic programs, and an inclusive educational environment where all are welcome. Two schools, Wassila Middle School and Wassila High School reside on Cruzy Street, and we would like to continue to solidify the reason we are the Warriors after our namesake, Chief Wassila. So, Wassila High School is currently the only major, the only big high school in the valley that doesn't have a street named after it. And so, I did a little bit of research, and I just wanted to see where the Cruzy namesake came from, because I wanted to make sure that, before we proposed this, that we weren't stepping on roots, historical reasons. And so, I found that the Cruzy Brothers all lived, it was after the Cruzy Brothers who owned the land where Cruzy resides, and the Cruzy Brothers all lived most of their lives in Anchorage. To that end, there is no significant historical reason the street is named Cruzy. I did find an obituary from May 20 of 2003 in the frontiersman of C. Thomas Cruzy, a longtime Anchorage resident who passed away on May 14, 2003, in Sidney, Ohio. I also found, May 29, 2015, in the ADN, David L. Cruzy, who was a broker dealer in securities, and he was of Anchorage. Finally, I found another obituary from July 9 of Joseph Edward Cruzy of Anchorage in Girdwood in the ADN. This was the last living brother of C. Thomas Cruzy. So, the past two years, we have had our Warrior Nation flags flying along Cruzy Street. We appreciate the partnership with the City of Wassila and allowing us to do that. Renaming Cruzy to Warrior Way continues to solidify Wassila's namesake, Chief Wassila, a Denainna Athabaskan warrior in his own right. And thousands of students have walked the halls of Wassila High School as Warriors. The Cruzy's are one family who did not even reside in Wassila most of their lives. I know there are some considerations, and I only have 15 seconds here, so cost to businesses, letterhead, signs and advertisements with old street names, and then also Cruzy surviving family members who, to my knowledge, mostly reside out of state or in Anchorage. I have a letter of support from Pizza Hut, from the owner of Pizza Hut. I'm also seeking a letter from Massou Health Foundation, which they are going to be talking about this in their board meeting in December.
Okay. Thank you.
And next, we have Justin Coles.
I live at 683 West Nelson in Wassila. I came here two weeks ago talking about the cars on Nelson don't abide by the speed limit. Speed limit all the way from Main Street to the end of Nelson is 25 miles an hour. Nobody goes 25 miles an hour. And so, I have to do a real dangerous task every day to walk from my driveway to the mailbox, which is about 100 feet, with vehicles doing 15 to 20 miles an hour over the speed limit and passing within three feet of me. When I was here last, two weeks ago, I asked for speed bumps, which I might ask again in the spring when it's more suitable for that time of the year. At this time, I was wondering, being as, there are no police officers, or they're having difficulty finding police officers to work here. There might be a couple of police vehicles that might be not in use, and I was wondering if you could allow one of the police vehicles to park down by our building. It's in a lighted area. I'd be glad to go over and clean all the snow off of it, just to park it there. Maybe some of the cars will start to abide by the 25 mile an hour speed zone and come down maybe at least 10 or 15 miles an hour, seeing a police car sitting there. Thank you very much.
Toby?
You did.
Exactly.
My name is Toby Hegelberger, and I am the Nutrition, Transportation, and Services Manager at Wassila Area Seniors. Thank you, council members and Mayor Ledford. I wanted to speak to the possibility of the grant, and also say, as I've been there almost four years, COVID hit us hard. We went in, seniors served easily doubled to over individuals of over 700 in the past year, whether they got one meal or they get a meal every day, right? And that's how we count that. Also, we did 32,000 meals just last quarter. And so, we went from about 120 home-delivered meals to almost 300 now. We're providing close to 500 meals daily. But really, and we thank you for those possible funds, and also the transportation piece, is Nancy, as I know her well, I have picked her up with our bus back when we were only using the bus for COVID, used to transport seniors. We were not doing it for meals, as we had to shut our dining room. But then, when we were able to reopen the dining room, we went back to picking up seniors for meals, so that, two, they were getting a hot nutritious meal in a center and socialization. But that cut my transportation to take seniors to necessary appointments, necessary doctor visits, and people have to spend money out of their pocket for that. We have looked at some vehicles for that. I thank you in advance for the possibility of that becoming a reality, to again have a vehicle that I can provide seniors that service. It's one of the most requested things that I get. Meals are always going to happen, and we're always Meals are always going to happen, and we're always grateful for any help with that. But the biggest need, and I heard it when I was down at Dallas for the Meals on Wheels Annual Conference, is transportation. And seniors need to be able to get where they need to go, and we want to be able to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And this is for you, Toby, if you, and there's certainly no requirement to answer. This is not a court or anything like that. You said you have looked at some alternative transportation. What price range are you looking in?
Right now, I'm talking to, and please don't hold me to their name, because I went and talked to Pat at Mobility Access, I believe is their name. It is a fully-equipped 2022 Toyota Sienna, all-wheel-drive, side entrance, will be able to take three seniors. It is a hybrid gas. It's got everything we need, $69,000.
$69,000. Thank you, Toby. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Marty Mativa.
You got that name right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marty Mativa, I am the Director of Velasco Operations for Coming Attractions Theaters, and we own Valley Cinema, the Extreme Fund Center, we have a Kenai Cinema, and also the Kenai Fund Center. So I'm here for actually a couple of reasons. First of all, I'd be remiss if I don't thank you and Wasilla's finest, if I could turn around and look the chief in the eye.
Absolutely.
And say, "Thank you, chief." I don't think that we are, even in Alaska, that we're free from all this turmoil that's been going on, and we've had a couple incidents recently at the Fund Center. And Wasilla's finest have been there, right on John and a spot, they've taken care of it, and I really appreciate it. I think it needs to go on the record for the great job that you're doing. I really just wanted to say that. I also want to commend you for recognizing Small Business Saturday. If you look in the state of Alaska, 99.9% of the businesses in the state are actually classified as small business, and I think it's wonderful that you recognize them and you make that notice. And I'll come back to that in a second. But I also want to commend you for looking back at the COVID grant, because I believe there's funding left, the city of Wasilla has some funding left, excuse me, in the COVID funding. And I really appreciate you giving this money to Washee or considering this. I think with over 15% of the Wasillas residents being seniors, me being one of them, I think that, unfortunately, I think that this is a great thing for you to consider and giving them. They provide a huge service. If you just look at the growth that they're going with their presented, I was recently, some of us were lucky enough to be at the Willow Way, the addition that they put on, the services that they provide are extremely, extremely important, and I'm glad you're considering this. But along that line, I'd like you to consider also, there are other businesses out there, for-profit and nonprofit, that have struggled, like you had mentioned, Mayor, Madam Mayor, in your opening comments about a Small Business Saturday. 92% of the businesses have survived, and we are two of them, survived because we had to pivot. We had to change the way we do business, and it hasn't been inexpensive. We stayed open along like everyone else. We did our darndest to hire people, keep the income coming in. We collected taxes as much as well as we could. The city has worked with us, the city's been very good to us. But I really would like you to consider to look at any other funding out there you've got till the remainder of this year. Don't give it back, just like this money you've got for Washee. It'd be a shame to take the money that we get from, we, because we are part of this community, we get from the state and the federal government, and give it back when, if we don't use it for the purpose that it was there. I can only compare this to Kenai. Kenai, we do about, maybe 25% of the business we do here, and they supported us, that city supported us tremendously. They went out of their way to make sure that not only us, every business in Kenai would support as well as it could with this money, with this funding. So I encourage you, if you, to look at any funds you've got left, both in the private and nonprofit sector, because there are other businesses that need this just to stay alive and to help this city grow. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And next, we have Senator Wilson.
For the record, my name is David Wilson, city resident of Wasilla. I've been coming to the meetings during the time of the funding was first talked about in the different tier systems, and I had grave concerns that some of the businesses were being excluded due to some of the regulations that were put on by the city of Wasilla. But, you know, I just didn't want to say anything because my voice is a little different at times coming to meetings, and every city is going to do what they need to do, and that's what the legislative process of the council members and the mayors and the administration have to do. But after hearing about the amount of money that the city has left, I'm concerned that we should use that funding to help not only the Wasilla Senior Centers, transportation's one of the greatest barriers to access and services in the Matsu Valley, and that's been an ongoing problem ever since, I think, the Massu Health Foundation started, that needs assessment, but also just our businesses, as Mr. Mativa talked about, the Extreme Fund Center. Yes, they maybe have a national chain, but how many folks do they employ within the city of Wasilla? I believe that the city of Wasilla has more employees and residents that may, that live, that work here than actually live here. So I would love to see our city make sure that we do another tier of funding for those individuals, or please consider doing another tier of funding for those individuals that do not qualify in the first few rounds. I think you guys did seven rounds, six rounds? I'm not sure on the number, but I just want to make sure that we can do everything we can to help our neighbors and my neighbors. My neighbor is the Extreme Fund Center, and I would hate to see the building like that be boarded up and having police sit out there devaluing my property values and my neighbors. But I hope that never happens, and I pray that never happens to my wonderful neighbor. They are a good neighbor to have. They are responsible, and they are community-minded. And there are other community-minded individuals, just like the Extreme Fund Center, that could also benefit from using the funding. And it's really hard to go to bat for additional funding for the Matsu, just as the other hat I wear, if the funds are not used all, because if we send funds back, it's going to be a lot harder to get additional funds for other projects. So whatever you do with this funds, please make sure that the funds are expended appropriately and thoroughly, and if you need help to get clarifications on those fundings, my office is always willing to help to make sure that we can expend funds in the most appropriate manner and make sure that we are above board and make sure that all those procedures are followed, because I would hate to have any sort of black eye on the city of Wasilla, and it's really hard to fight for, like it's again, for funding with, if we send back that substantial amount of funds, when other cities have already sort of expended that. So with that, I would, and also, I would hate to have a, you know, the city, the Senate President from District O to sort of outdo the city of Wasilla. I mean, that's just something that can't happen. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Tom Sterns. I'm the Senior Ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. I've been coming here for a long time, sharing with you all the great things that happened at Washee, the things that, good things, and all the things over the years that have been happening. And what we have, we've had some good times, we've had some lean times, but where we are today is so much farther than we were when I got here eight years ago. And it's so exciting to see what God is doing, or what we're doing at Washee. And the money that, if you appropriate some more money for us, this will just help our community, because seniors make up a big chunk of this community. And so, as I've shared with you before, I think it's very important what we're doing at Washee, and I would just ask you to allow us to have these funds. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Brenda. Brenda, my apologies, I just skipped right over you.
That's okay. It's all right. My name is Brenda Sheldon. I'm here to speak with you this evening. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I am entering into my fifth year as a board member at Wasilla Area Seniors. I am currently the Board Vice President and Chair of the Fund Development Committee. I feel strongly that seniors deserve to live as independently as possible for as long as possible, and to help our seniors achieve this, we need partners. We need the city of Wasilla to be a strong partner with us. Together, we will create a community where seniors thrive and can achieve the quality of life they deserve. The ability for our seniors to move about in our community is a challenge and one that we need your help with. We want our seniors to attend congregate meals, appointments, shop, or enjoy a community event. You have my commitment and assurance that funding received by Washee will be used judiciously and in the best interest of our seniors. They are the reason I'm here, and my family and I commit a lot of time and energy and love to the seniors, especially those, they're just amazing people. They're the reason I'm here, and I look forward to partnering with the city of Wasilla. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is James Drayton. I'm the CEO of Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. And one of the reasons why I chose not to speak tonight is because I felt that the testimony of the seniors themselves carried a much stronger voice. But what I want to absolutely assure you is that I've spent the last 13 years in senior care, and this pandemic has been like nothing anybody has seen. And the impact of isolation, depression, lack of socialization, has been devastating to the community. And the ability to get out and not be kept in your house in fear would be amazing to our members. So as you consider this proposal and the letter that I wrote you, please understand that it's much more reaching than just the words on the page. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Marlene?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmen. I'm here for two things. I know we talked about transportation, and I sit right next to the front doors, and I hear all the phone calls that come in of seniors that need, they need to go somewhere, they need to go to their appointments, their doctor's appointments, or physical therapy. And there's been times when it's just been like a desperate call, and I feel helpless. We had a senior the other day that fell, and she just needed to go to the doctor, she didn't want to go call 911, she just needed to go to the doctor, and she had us call for a cab. It took, they said it was going to be two and a half hours before they could take her to, to see a doctor, to see a clinic. We figured a way to get her there, but that's, you know, that's not the norm, every, there's, I'm sorry, that is the norm. Seniors need in transportation, and the cost is ridiculous, to pay $30 to go to your doctor's appointment. I know, I don't have 30, well, I do have $30, but, you know, $30 is a lot of money. So whatever, you know, you can do to help us, to help seniors live a better life, we'd really appreciate it. The other thing is, Tom told me that I needed to talk about Pie Forward, so thank you for your support. Pie Forward is our fall fundraiser for Thanksgiving. We sell pies to the public, and our local restaurants supply most of those pies. And then part of that fundraiser is also to send out a sweet treat with our Thanksgiving meal to all the seniors in our programs. I am here to report, our goal for this fundraiser was $25,000, which is a nice chunk of money that would help us do a lot of things at Washee. We exceeded our goal, and I don't have a final number, but it's close to $27,000. And I know some of you guys here helped. I want you to know that that's how we did great. We appreciate your support. And again, when you're considering transportation, please think about how we can help seniors here in Wasilla. Thank you.
Marlene, before you go, you want to talk about your blanket drive?
Yes. Thank you. So coming up for Christmas, I am putting together a blanket drive that is also going to include socks, hats, gloves, and pet treats that we can share. I'm going to call it, it's a Christmas share. We're doing that for seniors. We did that last year, and we had some of the members that are here today help us out with that. We're sending out to all of our seniors in our Meals on Wheels program, receive a gift for Christmas, and then we'll have a party at Washee where we're going to give the rest of them there. Last year, the feedback that I received, not only from the seniors who received the presents, was, they were moved, they, some of them were crying, and the volunteers that went out to deliver had the same impact and came back more appreciative and grateful for the things that they have, and they were so happy that they had the opportunity to volunteer. So please, as you're shopping, remember Washee, buy a blanket, buy some socks, and bring them to Washee. Or the Chamber of Commerce is going to be another place where you can drop them off to. Thank you.
Okay. Representative Tilton.
For the record, my name is Kathy Tilton. I do live just a little bit outside of the city limits of Wasilla, but I do represent several members of the senior community who are the recipients of the Meals on Wheels program, and I am here to tell you that I'm also on the board of a senior center in Chugiak. So I do keep track of the increasing needs amongst the seniors, and I know that the Meals on Wheels program, as far as the Wasilla Area Seniors, has increased, probably doubled, maybe tripled. And I would just encourage the council, and I want to say thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, for allowing me even to speak, but I would like to encourage you, that any funds that you do have left over from your CARES Act grant, that you do try to find ways to appropriately use those funding, because I would like to second what Senator Wilson had said, that using the funds appropriately and making sure that those are making its way into the community are what they, that what they were appropriated for, and it is very difficult for your valley representatives to actually get funds to get out into the valley. So I would encourage that if you do have funds available, making those available to businesses here. I just currently went to 49 businesses right here in the city of Wasilla from the chambers. Yeah, I went to every one of them, 49 businesses right here, small businesses right here in the heart of Wasilla, and every one of them were amazing, and they are all really trying to do a really good job and do business right here in the city. There's some new businesses that are coming on, and there are businesses that are still struggling to get through what has happened during COVID. So I would just like to encourage you that if you have those funds available, is what I have heard, that you look at those and say, "How can we get those out to the public?" Transportation for seniors is absolutely, it's absolutely something that they must have, and I will tell you that it is very, very difficult for seniors to get transportation. And part of the challenge has to do with, and I'm sad to say this, but has to do a little bit with licensure through the state of Alaska. I know this because I know somebody who has a transportation company, and they are, they wanted to be able to provide rides for seniors but are unable to get the insurance that is required, because they need five years of giving rides to seniors before they're allowed to get that. So there are some regulation things that we do need to work on from the state standpoint. So therefore, if the city is able to help with some kind of transportation and offering, allowing the Washee to be able to purchase their own vans and be able to provide rides, I think that that is, that would be very appropriate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Honki Lee, and...
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Honki Lee, and great to see you again. And my name is Honki Lee, and I'm running for United States Senate next year as an independent Alaskan. So I want to introduce myself and my campaign a little bit. So where my background first, I'm a lawyer right now in Wasilla, and I used to be a computer programmer. And before that, I was in the US Army for four years. My army job was electricity for helicopters. So, yeah, I was born in Ithaca, New York, 1978, and then I grew up in South South Korea for about 18, 19 years. Then I -- I'm 43 right now. And so when I was like 18, 19, yeah, I came back to America and studied computer science and other stuff. And then, so that's my background. And also, how about my politics? I have over two minutes left. So my politics is that I'm independent. I used to be Republican, okay? Now I'm independent. Why? I guess I kind of graduated from the Republican Party, I guess. I learned a lot, so I moved on and doing my own things. Sometimes nowadays, I would agree with Democrats. Sometimes I agree with Republicans. It depends on the issues, okay? Because I thought it was my time to think independently, besides from party politics. So I admire Democrats and Republicans, both of them. They're all Americans, and I love them both, okay? To me, Republicans are like more fathers. Democrats are like more mothers, like we have tough love, soft love. It's great checks and balance, great two-party system that we have in America, unlike some other countries who do not have two parties. So now what does my campaign stand for? I'm running for United States Senate next year. So I represent, I mean, what I advocate for is responsible development, environmentally sound development of Alaska resources. So, for example, we have pebble mine, we have copper, maribdenum, and gold in pebble mine. In Anwar, we have oil and gas, and methane, and coal. I'm all for that, okay? Nowadays, we have such a great technologies and environmental regulatory regimes so that we can develop those safely. So I want to bring the left, right together, create jobs, make money, and help out the people. Thank you. That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Items for approval under the consent agenda this evening are: the regular meeting minutes of November 8, 2021. There are three items up for introduction with a recommended public hearing date of December 13, 2021. Number one, resolution serial number 2127, providing an opportunity for review and public comment pursuant to Wasilla Municipal Code 3.90.085-C on the collective bargain agreement between the City of Wasilla and the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association, and providing for the Wasilla Police Department Employees Association and the City of Wasilla to enter into negotiations for a new contract, and authorizing the administration to begin contract negotiations. Number two, ordinance serial number 2123, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by accepting and appropriating $6,000 from the Alaska State Library Institute of Museum and Library Services, ARPA federal funding, for purchasing materials for a storytime walk-around the library and materials to add to the library's collection. Ordinance serial number 2125, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by appropriating $15,000 from the general fund fund balance for contracting traffic control services in support of the 2022 Iron Dog snowmobile race being run from the Menard Center. There is one resolution recommended for approval, resolution serial number 2126, transferring funds within an accounting fund, and the amount of $70,000 for road paving projects. There are two action memorandums recommended for approval this evening. Number one, AM number 2147, confirming the appointment of Timothy Burney to the Planning Commission. Number two, AM number 2148, contract award to HDL Engineering Consultants in the amount of $54,000 for the Hurley Circle Utility Extension Project Engineering Services. Those are the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
Graham seconds.
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard and seconded by Councilmember Graham to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the IAM.
IAM number 2114, Draft Code of Ethics Review and Discussion. This item was postponed from the November 8, 2021 city council meeting. This is a committee of the whole item.
Madam Mayor, I move, we move into committee of the whole to discuss IAM number 2114.
A second.
Okay. The motion has been made by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard to enter the committee of the whole. Is there objection? Hearing none, we are now in committee of the whole. The time is 6:56. Okay. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we all may recall, at the last city council meeting, this item was brought up, and there was some brief preliminary discussion about this item, and it was better decided that we have some, an opportunity to take a look at this in more detail individually, and then discuss it jointly for potential action later on. I believe Councilmember Brown is kind of the chief in charge of putting this together, so I would yield the floor to Councilmember Brown.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it is open mouthed and by the way, additional discussion. This was the first look at this that I want to give before the council. I believe it's important for us to have a code of ethics in writing, not that this was to insinuate that it's not being practiced now, but I think it's good for the public to see what we do and what is expected of us and the rules we follow. And that was an attempt for us to put this in writing so that public would be fully aware of what should happen and the recourse if they had questions about that going on. Thank you.
City Attorney, Holly Wells, you want to speak to this item?
Sure. I will just, I'll just echo Councilmember Brown's comments. I think one of the directive that Councilmember Brown gave the working group where we were coming from was to both ensure that the accountability and the transparency of the council and the rules that it follows are easy to find, easy to understand, and easy to execute by the public, but also to ensure that council members and the city attorney, the city clerk, as well as appointed members of commissions and boards, had the ability to use an advisory opinion process and also see what the rules were as they applied to them so that they could navigate them in a way that builds public trust and that sort of collaborative approach. So at this meeting, I think one of the things we did at the last meeting is we put a PowerPoint up there and sort of walked you through all of the preliminary components and all of the provisions at a macro view. And one of the things we're hoping to do is just gather some of the thoughts that council members may have had in the interim, and we do anticipate there will likely be another work session or committee of the whole in the future before we bring anything back. I'm here if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could suggest that we kind of walk through this thing by the different paragraphs or different codes that are listed here from 2.02.010 to 2.02.160, just go through each of those and see if there are any comments on those so that we can make sure that, particularly without the majority of the council here tonight, that everybody has an opportunity to speak up. Just a recommendation.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. So I will give you a run-through, and at the next meeting, when we've collected some thoughts, or you know, if there are additional thoughts, one of the things we'll do is we'll not only have the PowerPoint back up to help visualize and walk us through, but we'll also have a memo that we, there's a memo in the packet, but something that is more specific once we have really pared it into or created a more final version of what you can expect. And that may, I think that rollout, for lack of a better term, will come at the first meeting, so just a first reading. So that's one thing to keep in mind, too. There'll be another opportunity. So if I miss something here, or if there's something that you need more guidance on or direction, or a better explanation, just let me know. But the Code of Ethics, one of the things that it does is it incorporates a lot of the provisions and responsibilities and requirements that council already and appointed members, as well as, and this also applies to the mayor, the city clerk, and the city attorney. So it incorporates a lot of the things that we are already, you know, required to follow into one place. And one of the things that it does is it tries to spell out those things in very, very clear language, and where there was any uncertainty or ambiguity before we tried to create certainty and ambiguity, or certainty and clarity. So in the definitions, you'll see that reflected in the definitions. When we have, when we have, for example, a definition of financial interest and substantial financial interest, we define them in a much more specific manner. And so what I'm going to focus on, because I think it's one of the most important, is the substantial financial interest definition. That, I think, deserves council's attention. The substantial financial interest definition is important because, under Alaska statute, each municipality is required to have a conflict of interest section. The conflict of interest section has to do certain things regarding the prohibition of council's participation on a decision in which the council member has a substantial financial interest. What it doesn't do is require a municipality to define substantial financial interest. And as a consequence, the definitions of substantial financial interest have been a real problem throughout the state because it's difficult. One, it changes what is, and what's substantial to one person may not be substantial to another. So there's a lot of confusion there. Additionally, we have a body of case precedent that tells us that when a court is looking at whether substantial financial interest exists under the conflict of interest, they look at certain factors. They look at whether the financial interest is a substantial part of the consideration before you, whether the financial interest will be significantly impacted or changed by the outcome of the official action, whether or not you, the interest is known or it's attenuated, and how clear it is, and whether a reasonable person would consider that interest significant enough to change or influence your decision. And so it's really important that council members are aware of that factor, that standard, and how to walk through it, and that's really nowhere in the code right now. And it's, you know, unless you're going to dig through case precedent, you're not going to find it. The other piece of that, though, is you can have five factors that you have to apply to every situation, but the reality is that still leaves the public sometimes suspect of a decision regarding a substantial financial interest, and council members or commission members confused as to what, you know, what qualifies under those factors. So the proposed Code of Ethics presents also a presumed substantial financial interest if you have a single transaction of $1,000 or $5,000 in the aggregate over a year. And that does not mean that that presumption cannot be overcome, so there are situations where that may be overcome, but it gives the governing bodies, as well as the, you know, commissions and boards, something to go on. You know, a starting place is if I'm going to get $1,000 out of a single transaction, I'm going to be presumed to have a financial interest, and we'll have to talk about it if I think I do not. So that is probably for definitions, so I'll leave it there, is unless someone has a question or want to add something.
A couple of, probably more comments than questions, but leads to questions. You know, number one, on page two of the Code of Ethics working draft, at the top, where it talks about financial interest, it says, you know, if a person is working in a volunteer position or working with a nonprofit, they do not have a financial interest unless the position is compensated. A stipend for meeting attendance or expenses associated does not constitute compensation. I think we need to be a little bit more definitive when we talk about compensation. You know, if that compensation is 10% of the adjusted gross income of that person for the year, then that would be considered a financial interest. You know, if you're getting paid $1,000 a year to be on the Wasi Board, which they don't, by the way, in case you were wondering, if you're getting paid $1,000 a year to be on some board of directors, you know, that is dealing with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, even millions of dollars, that hardly creates a financial interest unless that is a significant portion of the person's income with which you're dealing. So my recommendation would be, you know, 10% of the compensation. Now, of course, you're, we obviously don't collect tax returns on elected officials and, you know, folks in positions of authority, so that would kind of reply, rely, excuse me, on, you know, self-reporting of that, but as long as people are aware of that, I think having some sort of number there is appropriate. Secondly, you talked about substantial financial interest, which is on page three of the working draft presented tonight. You know, number one, it says, you know, notwithstanding these factors of financial interest that would result in a pecuniary gain. I noticed you didn't use that word, even though you're a lawyer. I don't think anybody ever uses that word, you know. Think of it's cash or cash equivalent gain, perhaps might be more appropriate, just wordsmithing there. But the real thing here again is a pecuniary gain or loss exceeding $1,000 in a single transaction, or more than $5,000 in the aggregate in 12 consecutive months is perceived to be substantial. Unfortunately, I am not in the class of a great many Alaskans that make over $100,000 a year, but if you're making $100,000 a year, or even if you're making $75,000 a year, $1,000 bucks is hardly a substantial financial interest. Once again, I think we should look at a percentage where it says maybe perhaps 5% of your adjusted gross income, either in a single transaction or over the course of the year, provides, you know, what you would be considered a substantial financial interest. I think $1,000 bucks, I mean, is too low. I mean, I can go over to Sandra Wilson right now, and I'm sure he wishes I would, and give him $1,500 bucks for his campaign. You know, but so I think the number we're looking at, the $1,000 number, I think is artificially deflated based on some outdated, perhaps, court laws, you know, which same thing with the campaign donations. I mean, it was $500 for years and years and years, now all of a sudden it's $1,500. So I think that $1,000 is just the wrong thing, and $1,000 to somebody that's making $25,000 a year, you know, might push that 5%, but $1,000 to somebody that's making $100,000 a year hardly constitutes, in my mind, a substantial financial interest. Thank you.
This is Councilman Johnson. I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Graham, I agree with you, but only to a point, in that the Councilman Graham, I agree with you, but only to a point in that the issue that I see is if we were to make it a percentage of an income, you would therefore have to disclose your income in order to have that percentage really make, make a meaningful amount. I mean, I have no idea what you make, and you probably have no idea what I make, so in order to be able to show a substantial income and know that you're exceeding it, I would have to know what you make and vice versa. And so I'm not sure that that is really workable in the end, and I guess a fixed amount that would apply to us all, because let's face it, nobody in the city council that I know of is in the million-dollar class, although some may be in the $100,000 class, but maybe the $200,000. So if we were to just make a simple assumption and make it a dollar value for that, I think that would be an easier measuring stick than a percentage. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown.
Yes, Councilman Brown.
Yes, the business, Graham's concern, from a previous life, I've investigated a lot less than $500 misconduct by an official. So a $1,000 may be a small amount to some people, but I know people who was making six figures and was investigated for misconduct for less than $500. So I think $1,000 is a starting point, and if it's a starting point, you know, the council can adjust it up or down from there, but I think that's a figure that everyone can wrap their head around, and I believe that is something that would apply to most of the councilman and commission members.
Okay. Is there further discussion?
I'll just add, I'm going to look into adding a compensation definition based on your comments, so we'll bring that back in the next round and see, you know, after working with Councilmember Brown and the others. And so I'll circle back with that and try to play with some definitions for compensation, which unfortunately, compensation and how much we earn, income, these concepts end up with the more simple $1,000, $5,000 in the aggregate direction because of, and I think the comments earlier by other council members sort of got there, what happens when we really say a percentage of a person's income? There's a couple things there, and it's not based on an amount in a legal case. The court will do their factors. The factors in the definition are pulled from case law. The dollars are definitely something that council can set higher or lower or change the format for that. If we say 10% of your income, that becomes a very different number for someone who, say, is, has a member of their household that earns $600,000 a year, and yet they earn 12, right? So then their income, so that question is, do you then require a combination of the household income? And then it gets to, well, what about outside factors for income if an individual earns a small amount, earns a large amount, but gets a lot of their funding or their monies from investments? So that is just, that's the part that we're always looking to. The other piece of that is we look at what number matters to the public, what the public thinks would be substantial, what is a reasonable number. And that's a, I understand that's a difficult decision to make, so I, this is well within council's purview and there is no, you know, and I'll provide this sort of guidance, if you want to call it that, but you can change the number and we can play with the number to make it reflect what council's wishes are. And I think that was where the committee was coming from, was trying to find what appeared to be a reasonable number. So for one, I'll get that compensation. I'll look at that 10%, taking that proportionality approach. I haven't seen that done before for compensation, defining compensation outside of just, you know, a much more direct manner. I haven't seen that done before, so I just want to look and see what our options are, and hopefully I can bring back some options.
If you could change that word, too, that'd be good. Pecuniary.
So that is one thing, that phrase is a term of art, and we do use certain terms of art because there's a body of law regarding it. And so by using one word, we know where to go and what it means and how to, so I will, that's generally the way that is described, and it's, you know, it's similar to what we'll find in finance, right? There's just certain words that have very distinct meanings, but I will look at it. I did underline it, and I'll go back and look and see if there's a way to call it a cash gain or loss. But any other comments on?
Yeah, just with regard to that, I know at the state level for the legislative ethics, it was very purposeful discussion and such that we didn't look at someone's income because that doesn't make a determination on what the final outcome would be. You're looking at laws, you're looking at the egregiousness of an ethics act, not on how much they make and how much can fill up the coffers then by how much they make. That, it kind of defeats the purpose of what you're wanting to convey. I mean, the ethics code is a code that the community wants to see with how they have their elected officials serve the community, not how much they make. But I know the Legislative Ethics Committee was very careful on that, and even with APOC, when they, when they find something that's really egregious, they're going to follow it based on their statutes and laws, and that's how they follow that. So I don't know, I'm not so much in agreement to have you go down that rabbit hole to find more information. Maybe council has a different opinion on that, but I just don't think it's necessary. And again, it kind of goes against what we're looking for, for the code itself. And then do we want to be so punitive that elected officials don't want to run? It's hard enough to fill out a financial disclosure. I mean, I'm an open book, you can see everything I've got, and that's not an issue. But if you talk to other people in the public that do want to run for office, when you have to disclose how many clients you have and this and that, it makes it really difficult. So then if you want to, or if you're forced to show how much you make, and then 10% of that comes into play, it makes it really hard. Ethics is not something to sneeze at, it's not something to take lightly, we know that. I just think we have to be realistic as we're piecing this together to how we want our code to look.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard's comments also bring up the issue of appointed commissioners because while all of those comments, you know, are very true for council members, I would, I think they would probably even apply more to commission and board members. So those are, you know, where there are volunteers, they're taking a position, they haven't been elected, and it's hard to fill those appointed positions in municipalities. So that's the other component. Maybe what I will do, and, I mean, unless I hear, unless this is objections, but I'll create a list of questions generated during this work session, or this committee as a whole. And as we bring back another draft after a meeting with Councilmember Brown, we'll also bring back the list of questions that then we can bring each of those questions to councils. We work through the ordinance and address them if there's counsel, if the council as a body votes for exploring this as a majority, just to conserve your legal, your legal fees.
And just a quick question, if I could, for Holly. Have you, have you looked at other cities then for how they have their Code of Ethics designed and how that's placed? Have you seen anything else with regard to kind of a sliding scale of percentage of what someone makes for, for that?
No, I mean, yes, I've looked at many other cities and we've worked with other cities drafting these, and I have not seen that. I have not seen a sliding scale or a focus on income as opposed to just very clean numbers. I do think that Wasilla will be in the forefront of this sort of, a lot of councils look at a Code of Ethics when they're in a time of crisis, I'm just going to be candid, you know, and they look at it as a way of rebuilding trust that was lost. Wasilla is unique in that this process is being undertaken in a time where there is trust and there is a good working council, and there is not this, it's not reactionary, which is, it's a huge luxury for council because you get to create a document that is your, you know, that you, and so I'm very excited for that, and I think this, that's a great approach. But what it means is sometimes the provisions and other codes of ethics are more reactionary and therefore are pointed at a specific, a specific incident. And these provisions have been, we've looked at all of the codes, we've sort of tried to take into account when we do know, you know, how and when and what the purpose was behind them. And this, your substantial financial interest definition is different. It is more, and I do have another community that we represent that has adopted a similar provision. That is because it has the dollar amount and the factors in one provision. It creates this presumption at a dollar amount. A lot of communities have either a dollar amount, or they just list out the factors, or they don't have anything at all.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I realize the time is 7:21 right now, for those folks that are on the phone. We do have eight people here that came specifically to listen to some new business items. My guess suggests that we suspend this discussion and move down the agenda to New Business Items 10.2, and once that is complete, take up this discussion again out of respect for the time limitations of the folks that came to listen in.
Okay, sure. Okay, we will suspend the discussion on IM number 2114. We're going into New Business, 10.2. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. New Business Item 10.2, Resolution Serial Number 2128, awarding a COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Grant in an amount not to exceed $500,000 to Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated for the Meals on Wheels Nutrition Program.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2128?
Madam Mayor, I move to move Resolution Serial Number 2128.
Is there a second?
I second that. Councilmember V. Locke.
It has been moved by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard and seconded by Councilmember V. Locke to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2128. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor, I believe Wasi provided some funding numbers to our finance department. Perhaps we could get a staff report on what summary that was.
Mr. Tankersley, will you please provide a report?
For the mayor to Councilman Graham, as the staff report and attachment letter indicate, Wasi did provide a letter to, to the city. From that, their request is in two tiers. One tier is $167,000, that's supporting the Meals on Wheels program, specifically meals. The second part of that program is $75,000 for transportation vehicle replacement, both of which were impacted from the pandemic, COVID-19, as attested to earlier.
Okay. Further discussion?
And did Mr. Tankersley find those numbers to be substantiated? Does Mr. Tankersley have any objection to those numbers, I guess is my question?
I do not, not with the information that we have. And then further, a memorandum of agreement or a testament would be signed by Wasi before the funds would be distributed as well.
Thank you, sir.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Calling?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank Wasi for coming this evening to give testimony on this. As a new council member, when I returned here to city government, I was surprised that we still had muddy sitting on the table to the tune of over $2 million, and the fact that Wasi had received $17,000 for PPE, and that's masks and alcohol and cleaning supplies, which I know you, you did receive and you've used part of that, and, you know, I think that's very beneficial. But I think the overall sense from, from the work that I had done looking at other cities to see how they had used their CARES Act funds was that other cities of like size like us had dispersed many, many CARES Act dollars to their senior centers for the Meals on Wheels program for transportation and just overall for assistance to our community members elsewhere that really were hurting during the pandemic. We know, too, that the pandemic hasn't ended. It's called an endemic, and it's continuing on. So I'm hoping that the funds tonight will, will pass and that will help you immensely. But on top of that, I would like to see a matching grant from the city of Wasilla, from General Fund, to help you further. There are things that the CARES Act had very specific in their stipulations, as Troy has said in previous meetings, and which I do understand, and that's difficult. So when you have all these requirements from the federal government, much of what I've seen with DOT issues, and you get a long list of things that you can or cannot do. I think if we look at a match in addition to what, what council has tonight for this resolution, I believe that you have many needs that haven't been probably discussed here tonight, but just besides the meals, I know that there are other administrative costs that I'm sure that you could greatly benefit from. So I will be asking to move that tonight then for a matching grant coming from General Fund from city. Thank you.
To Sullivan Leonard, we have, we are, I have directed staff to do a resolution to provide grants to Wasi and to my house. So they do have money coming.
May I ask how much, Madam Mayor?
It will be $100,000 each.
I'm sorry, how much?
$100,000 each.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A question again from Mr. Tankersley. Source of funds here is listed as 4994518, City Resiliency and Recovery. Is the balance of the remaining CARES funds in that account? And if so, what is the balance of that account?
The balance of that, through, excuse me, through the mayor, Councilman Graham, no. So the 4518 account houses the majority to the tune of approximately $4 million, of which in this request, it's moving $242,000 to the small business grant line. There's, there was a total of five accounts created during the CARES Act funding, and occasionally we move the money around as necessary, like we are seeing here tonight. So in this case, it's approximately $4 million, but like specified in the, in the report, approximately $2 million is left, or anticipated to be left by the end of 1231.
Now, just prior to this disbursement of $242,000?
That is correct. And one of the things that came interesting today, actually, I had a conversation with municipality in Oregon, I believe, and they have a population of 25,000. We were very interested in finding out what they received in CARES funding, and all I got was not near the 18 million mark, and how, he doesn't know, but how fortunate we were to receive such funding that they wish they had down there. It was quite enlightening.
So if I may continue, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
At the last council meeting, you had guesstimated, you know, not to impugn your integrity or anything, but you had guesstimated that there was about 1.2 to 1.5 million -- integrity or anything, but you had guesstimated that there was about 1.2 to 1.5 million on the table that had potential to be returned. Is that, is that still a reasonable number? Tonight, you mentioned 2 million.
That was before this, this 200,000 or 240,000 expenditure. If it passes, we have some expenditures still forthcoming through public safety and the like. It's possible that we'd have about a million and a half, maybe 1.7. I'm really guessing here.
I understand.
I can't anticipate everything that's possibly still open.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Mr. Graham, our intent is to spend every cent of that CARES Act money. But we have to stay within the boundaries of what we can and cannot do.
I understand and appreciate that, Madam Mayor. Time is short. And the time to do that is now or two weeks from now.
Well, we're getting there. Okay, is there any further discussion? Let's vote on this. Okay, we are voting on...
The adoption of Resolution Serial Number 2128. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember V. Locke?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2128 passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, V. Locke, and Harvey in support.
Okay, the time is 7:32, and we are going to take a...
The board Graham moved to suspend the rules. There was no objection. So at 7:41, the council can re-enter committee of the whole.
Okay, we are back to the committee of the whole on Resolution Serial Number 2128. No, that's wrong. Oh, yeah.
The committee of the whole will be on IM number 2114. And this is continued discussion on the draft Code of Ethics review and, review and discussion.
Okay. Mr. Graham, you got anything else?
Oh, I think we only went through 2.02, 2.01. And I think we're hopefully at this time to 2.02, 2.020. Looking at Ms. Wells.
Yes, that sounds, that sounds right to me. And I'll move through this fairly quickly because I know that I put you through this last meeting. So I will try to, I will try to move quickly and collect questions and comments. And then when we do it again, we'll sort of try to be a little more pointed once we have that full collection. But the next thing we look at is the purpose. And a Code of Ethics purpose statement is more important than you might find in other code provisions. The reason why we use it is to help remind the council, commissions, any hearing, yes?
I thought we were on scope and title. We hadn't...
Okay, yes, I will talk about that.
Thank you.
I don't have much to say about those except for it really, it does tell us that we're looking at the appointed commissions and boards, the city council and the attorney and the clerk. And it talks about the fact that the city employees are not covered under this particular Code of Ethics because they are subject to their own personnel policies and procedures. And one of the reasons we talked about last, last time for this, for this difference is in addition to personnel policies and procedures, there's grievance procedures, there's, there's contracts, and there's also certain laws, including the Wage and Hour Act and including certain anti-discrimination laws that apply to employees. And so including them in this Code of Ethics and not creating that separation runs the risk of actually reducing the amount of accountability they have and the obligations and protections afforded rather than increasing them. But unlike employees, commissioners, board members, the city attorney, and the clerk who are appointed and are under contract with the council for the most part, and there are places where the clerk will fall into those personnel policies. But for the most part, we are not subject to those same provisions. And that is also why your directors are included in the employees because they are, they are governed by those same laws.
I could ask a question regarding Item C. Enforcement proceedings may be commenced and continued to completion after a person is no longer a city official for conduct that occurred during the time the person was serving or engaged in such capacity for the city. Seems to me the maximum fine on this was $1,000. Seems to me this is kind of a political witch hunt. If there's something that really happened, shouldn't we refer it to appropriate police for police action if it's something that happened after, you know, you know, continue after completion of a person that's no longer a city official? Didn't we just see this at the national level where it was just a complete boondoggle?
Well, I don't, I wouldn't think of this as a mirror of that situation. The way I think of it, of it this way is if a, if a person is a council member and their conduct is a violation of your Code of Ethics, you want them, that, that conduct to be subject to the same standards and expectations as the remaining council members or commission members. Or for example, if I was engaged in something that was subject to this Code of Ethics, the fact that I was no longer your city attorney, and yet that thing did not rise to a violation of a rule of professional conduct or a violation of a crime, I, I still think you would want me to be accountable. Otherwise, you create a potential free-for-all for conduct that would bleed over or would be at the end of someone's term. So I haven't seen that before. I have not seen a Code of Ethics not provide a way for the conduct that has ramifications on the actions taken by a body commissioner, board, or services provided by a contract employee to be somehow, to fall through that sort of loophole, right? I think in that sense. So I think we're just saying that if your conduct during your time continues or has, you know, it, it takes a year before that all shakes out, you're still going to be subject to the, the provision. Realistically, the consequences of that, right? If you have a violation, realistically, you have the fine. And that is, that is certainly a deterrent. But you still, you don't have the other, the other sanctions, a lot of, that would really not apply to that person if they're outside of that role.
Yes, my concern would just be, I mean, we're potentially going to spend $30,000 to embarrass somebody and fine him $1,000. That's, you know, when you look at city funds, you know, obviously Wasilla is a city that's financially well managed, but it's done so because it's been conservative, not to the point of excluding attorneys, of course, but it's been conservative with, with how the attorneys are used, you know. And I, I'm not sure this isn't opening a door that we don't want to look at. But that's just a comment. Thank you.
On the Ethics...
This is Councilman Johnson. So where does the $1,000 penalty come into play in this ordinance?
It allows, the code allows a fine of not more than $1,000 to be imposed per violation.
Okay, so my concern is two for one. So I do something during my term, okay? And the next city council changes the ordinance as to what is, what is ethical, then comes back at me and fines me $1,000. So I, I, I have a slight problem with that, okay? That's the first thing. And secondly, the, the code, as far as I remember from last discussion, basically was termination of your, or censure of your councilman or whatever. So if you're already, you're already off of the board, I guess I don't really see the penalty except for a dollar value. So I'm a little bit worried about this provision as stated.
Well, I just want to be very clear with the provision states is if you have conduct while you're on council or on a board or on the commission or serving a city attorney or the clerk, then, and proceedings are commenced, they can finish and complete. So it says enforcement proceedings may be commenced and continued to completion after a person is no longer a city official for conduct that occurred during the time the person was serving or engaged in such capacity for the city. So I guess what I can do is change that to may continue, if, I mean, or we can put on the question sheet, may continue to completion if commenced after a person is longer. If that would make, if that, you know, if that's something council wants to consider instead. But it is also important to remember that you have a limitation period to when you can bring a complaint under the Code of Ethics. And so the Code of Ethics, Code of Ethics complaint can, I'm sorry, can be, can be brought for five years after the date of the alleged allegation. So we can change that period of time, make that shorter, you know, but that's, so for five years, a person, and that's a, that's a generous, what I would call a generous statute of limitation provision. You know, that's a long time. So you can go shorter and make, and say, you know, what, that's, we could...
I mean, we look at what, what is, what we view as ethical now versus what was ethical a few years ago, and that changes. Now...
You won't be subject to a new...
Because what I would almost want this to be is if you're serving as an elected member, if you started a procedure while you were an elected member, you can continue on in the ethics violation after your term or you have resigned, when you're no longer there. I guess I've never seen us going after a congressman two years after he left office. Correct me if I'm wrong.
We'll also have, I mean, I think this is fairly common to have a Code of Ethics provision that can be enforced based on conduct that occurs while you're in office or appointment. So you go through that process. So I'm, I, we can change it. I have no problem with changing it. But this is actually pretty common. And it's not just common in the municipal realm because what it's saying is you are, you are accountable for the conduct while you are in office. And there's a statute of limitations on when a person can bring a complaint for action you took while you're in office. And the five years is taken from Code of Ethics. I think there were two or three that we looked at that have a statute, and we applied that, that statute. So it's totally movable. I wouldn't go, I think a statute of less than a year would be unusual to go that short, you know. But anything over five years would be unusual because that's very long. And I do think five's on the long year. I think though, holding people account, allowing, if you bring a complaint against somebody while they're subject to and under the Code of Ethics, permitting the Code of Ethics, the requirements and to hold them accountable under that Code of Ethics for conduct in that period of time is recommended. And one of the other reasons is because you get a difference between someone who continued to sit and, you know, to be subject to the Code of Ethics and someone who steps down. So, and you can maybe change the consequences. You can say if a person's subject to the Code of Ethics, or, so that would be in the case of, you know, the clerk and myself, or, you know, steps down, or they are no longer, you know, the, the complaint will be dismissed. You can allow people the ability to avoid a violation or a potential fine. But I don't know that, you know, I don't know that's, that's, I've not seen that before. It's certainly novel and it's certainly an option. I will put that on the list as well if that would help some council members work through.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, sir.
Well, just to clarify, if I am no longer a council and a new council making new rules, they can't hold me accountable for that. I'm not accountable for what was in effect at the time I was in office. And if the new rules come about next year when I'm no longer in office, it doesn't apply to me. It's only if I violated the current rule while I was in office and then I quit or was not re-elected, but I committed it while I was still an official elected officer, you can continue that investigation even though I quit the next day after you started investigation.
This, this is Councilman Johnson. That's fine. Where does it say that? It doesn't say that, the problem.
It doesn't have to say that because to do that would be a very express violation of the law. It would be thrown out of court before it ever, I mean, this not, I mean, we can state it if you want to, but we cannot hold you to laws that weren't in place while you were in office. So this, these laws were, what this provision is talking about is subjecting someone who was in office and engaged in conduct. And when I say in office, I mean, was subject to the Code of Ethics, engaged in conduct, that somebody, and, and one of the things to remember is your Code of Ethics is a complaint-driven process. That means somebody has said that they believe that there was a violation. And it's a private process. It is not, it's confidential. So if there is an allegation against somebody, and it is in essence a witch hunt, and that person is saying, you know, someone says, I think this conduct occurred, then it goes through a process and it has a preliminary review process where, where the city attorney would look at it and say, okay, are we even, do we even, if we take everything as true, is there even a violation here? And that would, so something in the wrong period of time would be immediately thrown out. And no one would ever know that that occurred because there are provisions that hold people accountable to that confidentiality. And he'll make that a violation of your code if someone violates the confidentiality component. So they would be subjecting themselves to, to damages or potential fines. So, because that's a violation, right? So I guess in that sense, absolutely not. This goes into effect on a certain date. The rules apply on that date. And they, they do not, if they are changed or amended, then those rules cannot apply. They can't be retroactively applied to anybody. And that would be taken care of on the first stage of review. But I mean, if we put that in here, we are sort of stating, because that's true with all laws, right? Like that's just sort of...
I could follow up on Councilperson Johnson's comments there. During your reply to Councilperson Johnson, you said that this provision is fairly common, which to me means some people do it and some people don't. I, I'd be interested to see, you know, I mean, what study did we do to determine, you know, that this was, that this is, you know, more prevalent than not having this in there? I don't, I don't know if there is such a study or something like that. But in the legal world, you said, well, it's fairly common, which means, you know, some people do it and some people don't. I mean, are there examples of, where people didn't have this in that led the city into problem or whatever, you know, municipality they were with? And the second thing would be is, obviously, I'm guessing if someone files a complaint against me, that then you or whoever the city attorney is would be representing the city in that case. And then I would be representing myself. So if a case is filed against somebody, are we providing for a public defender, so to speak, so that we're not bankrupting this person, much like a former mayor that we had, you know? I mean, ended up stepping down from a higher position because, you know, she was just being badgered to death by all these nonsense complaints. And, you know, now she can afford it, but back then she couldn't, you know. So, so that's where my concern with this comes in. People just filing, you know, willy-nilly, which seems to happen a lot, you know, more common than not, I think was your word. But, you know, I mean, I don't think we should bankrupt previous city officials and previous city employees by having to defend themselves from complaints where there is no foundation. And I don't see that in what I've read so far, is that who determines whether something's going to move forward or not? far, is that who determines whether something's going to move forward or not? We talked about a hearing officer and this and that, but I, you know, to me, this just is a pretty big can of worms and I, uh, I am uncomfortable with it at this point.
Well, I'm gonna just bring up a few things because I'm a little bit worried that perhaps how I'm presenting this to, we're getting away from the, I know Councilmember Brown's purpose and what this is, because this is not a bankrupt, I mean, I hear a lot of sort of loaded concerns and fears and I want to make sure I address those so that if they stay and you decide to not do this, you know, that, I have, this is a code of ethics. It certainly isn't something legally that I would say you're required to do or you're, you know, you're recommended to do. I will say that I give lots of presentations on good governance and I, the ability for a municipality to adopt a code of ethics in a time of, uh, when they're healthy is a, you know, is something I promote. So you would see that. But I, I will, the code of ethics process, a lot of what is in here is you'll find in the city of Homer, Alaska, um, there are, the city of Fairbanks has a code of ethics, the Matu Borough has a code of ethics, and these provisions are pretty common. Um, they're not the ones that really lead to a lot of, um, a lot of heartache. I think where we see a lot of discussion and a lot of concern setting those substantial financial interest amounts, um, determining gifts and gratuities and prohibited acts surrounding certain conduct where also there's, there's fear, right? There's fear of an unintended violation. And so making sure that those are defined and that those, that conduct really reflects what council wants. If council decides they do want a code of ethics, I think that's really important. On these other provisions, legally you can go either way, but I just want to make sure everyone understands. A code of ethics says to your community, we are trying to balance that we are a small community and we have necessarily, we have a necessary need to engage, to have family and friends and businesses and interests, even financial ones, and that we know each other and we have this tight interconnected relationship. And that will create some issues sometimes with what comes before us and how we conduct ourselves and what we're supposed, and, and we also have volunteers that take very important roles in business. So we want to set up some basic standards. Some of them, like the substantial financial interests are, are provisions required by state law. Others are prohibited acts we as a community agree we do not want to engage in. What the other part of a code of ethics does is it actually creates protection. Because if somebody wants to file a complaint often against a council member or a commission member for conduct, right now, their, their place to do that would be the court, right? And that is very expensive and that does not have those confidentiality provisions. That does not allow you to avoid having to pay to win, we'll say, right? Because that, winning has a cost. Um, this provides a situation where if a person has a complaint, that complaint goes to the, um, the city attorney, as long as it's not against me, it would go elsewhere to a outside council. I look at it and say, you know, this would, on its face, if everything they're saying is right, this would be a violation, you know, and the form is proper. So it's not, so it's not going to get past that first level of review if they're not alleging something that's in the code of ethics, if they're just using it to, but if they allege it and the facts are wrong and they're lying, it will then go to a hearing officer and it's under confidentiality. I will not be representing the city because the city is not on the other side of that complaint. A hearing officer is hearing from the person who's making the complaint and the person who the complaint is against. And the city does not have, we have confidentiality provisions as well. So that means that in a situation where a complaint is brought against a council member, the mayor will not know that there is this complaint against the council member. So, and it does, it does create certain steps and ethical screens that have to be created between the clerk and the, and the city attorney. And if it's one of us, we have to have an alternative method. But I'm not, I'm not in the room and a person accused could hire a lawyer or not hire a lawyer, but there's not this. I just want to make sure, and I'm not trying to be combative. I just want to be very clear that this process is not a process that is creating an avenue to manipulate a system or undermine any elected or appointed official.
So, so my, my only concern is not from the point of view if the official or councilman is still in office. That's not my issue. The issue is, is that the allegation is then brought after you leave the office, okay? And now you're saying to me that even the mayor doesn't know about it. So what you do is we're opening ourselves up to a witch hunt.
Well, what I, I mean, you would not be opening yourself up to a witch hunt because a complaint has to be filed and then it goes through a very strict procedure under the code of ethics. At the end-
Yeah, but the strict procedure at this point is, although it's defined, but the, it's a secret process.
Is to protect the complainant until there is, so if there is a determination that there is a violation, then that determination becomes public. However, it protects the name if requested by the complainant. Because remember at that time, the hearing officer has found, um, has found a violation. And the hearing officer was specifically, we use that method to keep it away from the city as much as possible. A hearing officer is usually, and, you know, right now, for example, the Office of Administrative, um, Law has, uh, judges that sit in that capacity and they would be bound by confidentiality. But I, there is no way to have, and I think this is something to really think about. There is no way to have a code of ethics process that has an enforcement piece that doesn't, that can simultaneously prevent something from being used, um, in an untoward way, uh, that is public and maintain confidentiality yet transparency. So this is a, you know, you're looking at, how do we provide a proceeding that is controlled by the code provisions themselves that protects a person from having their reputation impacted by a complaint that isn't valid? And that does happen, right? The other thing that the, this code does is it allows for an advisory opinion. So if you're unsure about an action you're going to take, or if you feel like there's ambiguity, or if, you know, if there's concern, you can seek an advisory opinion and that provides protection under the code. And one of the things to remember is most of the things in the code are unlawful in other realms or would be considered misconduct in other areas or would be, for example, basis for recall. You know, there's consequences to these actions. It's just that it's not clear what the actions are for a lot of them. So this gives, um, all of the individuals and subjects who it some clarity and direction. But what I can do in providing a list of questions and comments for council to decide as a whole when we're, I can, I'm putting all of this on it. It'll say, you know, that do you want to, for example, limit your code of ethics to enforcement proceedings for conduct commenced, um, while in office and complaints brought during your term, you know, or during your service to the city? And not, and eliminate the ability to bring a, or allow to, either allow a complaint to continue once a person, uh, designs or to bring a complaint against a person for conduct in office, um, after, you know, after that.
So, it's, my feeling is this. I mean, I don't want to put, put the city in a situation where somebody does something unethical, okay? Somebody raises a complaint, then quits the office, so that the ethics, uh, process stops, okay? That I don't want to do. But on the other hand, I don't want to see a situation where somebody, um, believes he's done everything correct his whole term, and then a year later, after he's left office, has somebody come up and say, ah, but you did this wrong, either knowingly or unknowingly, and now we're into, um, okay, why are we doing this? Number one, because the person's no longer in the office. And that's where I believe the feeling of the witch hunt comes up. So, Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown?
Yes, Mr. Graham.
I'm thinking at this, because a lot of the question was being asked, what if the confidentiality, the administrative hearing officer, the procedures to prevent witch hunt, it's in the code already. And we need, I guess we need more time to read it and see what's in the code before we start changing the first part of the code, because a lot of this is already addressed to make sure that nobody is going to be held to a standard that's unreasonable. And, and there's laws that already, um, take care of administrative hearing officers, what they can and can't do, and they are obligations. And if they are, I mean, it would take the law, the city attorney, uh, administrative hearing officer, all the being cahoots to make a witch, uh, hunt go anywhere. There are several steps already in the code here that addresses these possibilities and prevents these.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Uh, the time is 8:09 and we have a lot more to do. So can we, um, postpone this till the next council meeting?
Madam Mayor, if I could, uh, suggest that we just complete the discussion of point 020, which is the scope and short title, and then suspend it until the next council meeting? I don't know. That seems to be where we got hooked up or dragged down or mired and, and, uh, whatever's going on there. But, uh, but to limit the discussion to 020 and then move forward.
Uh, I, this is Councilman Johnson. I agree with that. However, I would like to do one other thing too. In going through the reading through here, um, maybe it was just my copy that I downloaded, but my copy did not have paragraph 2.02.060 in its entirety. I only have the last thing. So I would like that added in there for the next meeting. Maybe my copy's bad. I don't know. Thank you.
How much further do you want to take this, Mr. Graham?
Oh, I don't want to take it any further at all. I do have one more question based on what you said that I think is covered later on here. But you, you did say that this allows for an advisory opinion in a later paragraph. Is it discussed when that advisory opinion is given or something? Or is it, or?
Yes, and there's a section on it. It basically allows-
As long as it's covered later, that's all I wanted, so we can have that discussion later.
It's a protection. And I will say that in 2.02.020, I, the language, I'm going to work on clarifying the language because the intent of the language is to say that it can be commenced and completed once they're in office. So it's, the intent of the language is to say if a complaint is brought against you, then it can be, um, you know, it can be carried out, at least in this provision, right? But, but the five-year statute of limitations means that you certainly can, as it's written, be held accountable for conduct five years of your, of your term. And that is something council may want to shorten. You know, council may want to say, I do not want to be four years down the road and get held accountable or have a complaint filed against me from action that early. So I, I think that that consideration is a really, um, important one and it kind of goes along the lines of the dollar. So I just, I think it goes on a shortlist, I guess I would say. Um, it's a little different than just wordsmithing, which is good too, but I think the shortlist is important. And I'm going to be building that shortlist so that we can, uh-
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion and a second to exit committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor, I move to exit committee of the whole.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Belloc, I second that.
Okay. Uh, is there objection? Hear none. We are now out of the committee of the whole.
Madam Mayor?
Is there?
Um, just for a quick comment, if I could, regarding code of ethics. Um, I just don't think we should be in a hurry to go through this and, and have it be done by a certain time period. There, there's a lot of provisions to consider within this and, um, if we can keep taking a bite out of the apple at each meeting, I think that's a good thing. But anyway, appreciate council's work on this. Thank you. And you too, Holly.
Is there any direction or action the council would like to take? So we are postponed until the next council meeting. Okay. Next on the agenda is new business. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the first item.
This is an update from Administration on Emergency Response Efforts Related to COVID-19.
There has been no new action taken by my administration on the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the next item of business.
Madam Mayor, could you update us on any sort of discussions that you've had with public health officials regarding where they think this is going? Are we on a downhill part of the curve? Are we holding level? You obviously get updates all the time.
On the, on the state's dashboard, uh, we were, they were meeting once, uh, three times a week. Now only one because the COVID numbers are going down. So, uh, Dr. Zink spoke to us in, um, AML and, um, basically it's, you know, you've just got to stand by and wait to see what happens. Nobody knows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay. The next item, Madam Deputy Clerk.
The next item is item number 10.3. This item was moved from the consent agenda to new business. This is ordinance serial number 2124, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by accepting and appropriating a federal aviation administration grant in the amount of $32,000 as part of the American Rescue Plan Act 2021 for Wasilla Airport Operations. And this item is an introduction recommended for public hearing on December 13th, 2021.
Madam Mayor, I requested to remove this, uh, to new business, not to postpone the recommendation for public hearing, but to get a little bit better understanding. I thought the staff report was a little bit thin here. Obviously, our, uh, our airport is, was what would be considered a non-primary commercial service and general aviation airport. And it does say that, uh, these airports around the nation will share $100 million based on the airport categories such as national, regional, local, and basic. Maybe Archie could give us a better understanding. Is this for us? I mean, is this pretty much the amount of money that, that we're going to work towards? Or is this just the start of a grant that we're applying for?
Well, I'd call it old money compared to what you just described. Because there's a whole, there's a lot of money coming down the pipe and this isn't it. So this is a second installment on what would be, for lack of a better term, PPE money.
Right.
So this is not the big dollars. And it's formula driven. Every airport got funds such as these. And we vetted it quite closely because, um, we weren't sure that, I mean, we weren't impacted on airport revenue, for instance. But FAA still says we can use it for operating, uh, operating costs. And so that's what's being applied to, like, like the electric bill, for instance.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Uh, Madam Mayor, I would, um, like to remove my objection to ordinance serial number, whatever it is we're working on here.
2124.
21, uh, 24 and, um, uh, move to place it for, um, on introduction for public hearing on December 13th, 2021. I will need a second.
Okay. Do we need a motion? Okay.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Councilman Johnson seconded.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded, made by Councilmember Graham, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Further discussion? Hear none. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is for, um, setting ordinance serial number 2124 for public hearing on December 13th. Councilmember Graham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Belloc?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
Madam Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Serial Number 2129.
Thank you. Resolution Serial Number 2129, committing fund balance in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 for the period ended June 30, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to, or I move Resolution Serial Number 2129.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, so I have no objection to this. I'm just reading through the staff report on this. It just talks about committed fund balance, and then it goes into, you know, five different fund balances here. Should we know what the balances of these funds are? I mean, there's no definitions or no real explanation of what the numbers are, just what the funds are. If that's not something that we should be concerned with, that's fine, too, but I just...
Through the mayor, Councilman Graham. So Gatsby 54 specifically calls out the committed fund balance. The staff report talks about the other fund balance components, whether they're assigned by your finance director, given that latitude, or unassigned based on the 50% or 60% calculation for future operating, should something catastrophic happen, that kind of thing. These fund balance components are within the financial statements themselves, set to come out hopefully this week. But this is a standard legislative requirement set by Gatsby 54 that puts it in front of council for adoption, that puts it on record, that says this is what council agrees to as to what we call committed. And we call committed here at the City of Wasilla for future capital projects, if you will. And each and every fiscal year, that calculation that happens of the total fund balance, it resets that committed fund balance. So right now, it's asking or specifying 24 million. Throughout, whatever happens in FY '22, we go through this cycle again, and it recalibrate or readjust that committed portion, just like the assignments can that you see. We talk about the airshow, for example, or things that are assigned specifically for specific purposes. So to really answer your question, no, we don't have to go into the definitions of each one of these sections. I can certainly go through each of those tonight if you would like.
I'm sure a private conversation might be more appropriate for that, but thank you. And my big question, you know, based on the change to Gatsby was, in which of these fund balance categories does our obligation for retirement come in? Since we're having to count that basically as a liability now, even though we don't have any idea what it is, that's not part, it's not part of this committed fund balance based on the numbers?
Well, it's all part of the calculations because it's assets, liabilities, fund balance, that kind of thing. But as far as calculation of committed fund balance, we're talking about the revenue and what our expenditures were in the year. And when we get a total fund balance, that's where we're talking about the assets, liabilities, and that kind of thing, how we come down to the total fund balance, and then how this further divides that. What components make up that total fund balance number?
And I appreciate that. Thank you. I just didn't see per's mentioned in any of these five different ones here.
You would not, as part of a piece of fund balance.
All right. Thank you. I have no more questions, Madam Mayor.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
This is on the adoption of Resolution Serial Number 2129. Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
Okay. Next on the agenda is communications. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the title of the items under communication.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two informational memorandums and one set of planning commission meeting minutes. The first informational memorandum is IM Number 2116, presenting the City of Wasilla Budget Calendar for Fiscal Years 2023 and 2024. The second is IM Number 2119, Monthly Financial Reports for the Period Ending October 31, 2021, to Include the Month-to-Date Expenditure Report and Disbursements Greater Than $10,000 in the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of November 9, 2021.
Thank you. Next is audience comments, three minutes per person. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council at this time?
Hello. Again, my name is Hong Ke Lee. I'm running for United States Senate as an independent on Alaska. So I'd like to talk about Pebble Mine. I'm pro Pebble, so I want to, it's a very interesting topic, also very controversial. There are a lot of division, a lot of concerns, which are very legitimate concerns. So Pebble Mine is right north of Illiamna Lake, which is the biggest lake in Alaska and third biggest lake in America. So, and Illiamna Lake, the Pebble Mine site, is not that far from here. It's 250 miles from here. So what I suggest is this. So the main opposition to Pebble Mine, it comes from this, okay, we have this open mine, if we have this open mine pit in Pebble Mine site, what do we do with all that waste rocks? That's kind of toxic because it's gold and copper and marble that are mined, so they have some heavy metals there. And also, it's volcanic rocks, they have some sulfur there, too. So it's a very concern that, so what do we do after we dig up all those darts, these tailings, these waste rocks in that mine? I, what they used to do back in the days, and still some other countries do, they're putting out dumping them. In Canada, about 10 years ago, they built this open mining pit, and they just dumped those waste rocks, you know, them. The dam broke, and it went down the river, killing a lot of salmon and polluting the river. That's the opposition, okay? So my suggestion is this, those waste rocks, let's build a road, a highway, okay, between Matsu Valley and Illiamna Lake. It's only 250 miles long, and nobody lives there between Illiamna Lake and Matsu Valley. There's nobody living there, okay? So if we build those, let's say, Illiamna-Matsu Highway, 250 miles long highway, yeah, then there will be no problem with those mining waste rocks, okay? Because nobody lived there, and we want to build those, use those waste rocks and make this asphalt road. So over space and time, there'll be this dilution of those toxic rocks, so it'll be safe. And also, Matsu Valley, you take five hours to go to Illiamna Lake, so it'll be tourism. I see great potential there, a lot of tourist potential. So, yeah, so that would be my proposal. I think it'd be great. So that's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, there anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, we will close. Audience comments, and we are on to, Madam Deputy Clerk, your comments.
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
No comments, ma'am.
Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a procedural question here. We did stop the discussion of IM Code of Ethics, but we need a motion to continue that next phase of council meeting.
I thought we did.
It says they're going to do that.
I have in my notes a motion to postpone it to December 13 from Councilmember Graham. Is that incorrect? Okay. All right. Is there any objection to continuing it to December 13?
Okay. Thank you. So as most everybody's aware, the Alaska Municipal League met last week, yeah, it was last week in Anchorage.
Madam Mayor, is the student mic on? We can't hear him.
How about now? Thank you, Nikki.
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear now.
Thank you. So as most of you are aware, the Alaska Municipal League met last week in Anchorage. The Alaska Municipal League is a collection of 165 different local governments, you know, up to the borough level, not including state governments. They get together and talk about a variety of different things that have statewide effect. You know, there's some training going on, there's some general discussion going on, and then there's some action towards how AML should conduct itself, you know, in the upcoming legislative session. And I am proud to report that the City of Wasilla was able to move revisions to Title 4, which called for aligning alcohol and marijuana licensing policies. As you may be aware, you know, our lack of ability to get additional licenses for package stores, for restaurants, and other places here in Wasilla is a real detriment to our economic determination. So AML will now be on our side in this upcoming legislation with a formal policy statement saying that those need to be revised. So I think the folks that were at AML from the City of Wasilla, helping put that together and move that through, that is important. Also, this is, there was no AML annual meeting last year because of the COVID pandemic. This is the, they did it in person this year. Last year, they did it, you know, via Zoom, which, of course, is everybody's favorite topic nowadays. But because of the change in venue, the change in the way that the meeting was held and so on and so forth, there were a couple of things that weren't communicated very well. Number one was the board meeting, the AML board meeting, and Councilperson Vlach represents District 4, which is the Matsu Valley, and I represent Wasilla as a past president of AML. So that meeting was supposed to be on Wednesday. It was postponed until Friday, so I am requesting the council approve covering the cost associated with that change because it wasn't in the original budget to go forward with that. And lastly, I wanted to congratulate the mayor on getting the planning commission filled up. You know, representative government relies on people being in each of the chairs, and having each of the chairs full gives us the opportunity to hear different points of view and kind of avoids the group think sort of situation. So that was empty for a while. Obviously, you've heard that I've had a great concern about that, but I'm very happy to see that Mr. Bernie, former Councilman Tim Bernie, will be joining the planning commission and look forward to having five people on that commission again and having a little broader range of discussion because of different points of view there. And lastly, of course, I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of need in the community. We were able to fill some of that, and we'll continue to work towards filling that in the future. If other organizations, you know, have substantiated requests or can substantiate requests for funding, I encourage them to come forward as soon as possible so that we can consider that because the door closes on this COVID money on 31st of December. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've got just one question for the finance director. Has he heard, or has there been any talk from the Treasury Department that the CARES Act could be extended past the 31st? It's just a rumor I've heard somewhere.
As far as, I'm sorry, to the council, to Councilmember Brown, as far as I know, the only extension to the CARES Act funding is dealing with tribes at this point, and I don't see any other legislative, anything coming forward to extend the overall overarching municipal side of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Thank you, ma'am. I also attended AML last week and found it to be very productive in the city's ability to convey the good work that we've done here. Each city stood up and kind of gave an overview of pretty much how the pandemic has affected them, and, you know, the city's word was solid. We're working real hard to get money out to those that need it. We come from a position where we are now debt-free, and there are a lot of cities that were kind of in awe of that. So I appreciated the mayor giving a report on behalf of the city like that. Anyway, it was certainly a good conference to attend. Anyway, just on another matter, I did attend the wrestling tournament, the Lance Fisher, is it Lancer Fish, Lancer Fisher? Sorry, Scott. I'm going to talk to Scott. My lifeline is Scott Bell.
Lancer Smith.
Yeah. And so it was a great wrestling tournament and all-day affair. My grandson was in it. He wrestled three times and actually won in his little division of the 45-pounder division. So anyway, really great event. Gosh, thousands of people there, kids, parents and all. And if you went to Wendy's or McDonald's and was surprised that they were out of hamburgers and ketchup, well, that's the yearly event of the wrestling tournament. So anyway, it was pretty, pretty great to see the Menard Center full like that and a lot of activity from our youth from all across, all across South Central. So that was fantastic. And then one thing I wanted to bring to council's attention was with regard to a request for a special meeting on November 30 with regard to discussion for COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Grant for the childcare centers here in Wasilla. There is discussion to work with THRED to see how that third party could work to get these funds dispersed out to those that are in need. My understanding is that there is some additional funds coming down the pike, but the way Congress works, we have no guarantee of when that may or may not happen. And so my hopes are that with such a short time period of getting money out to the community, that we're able to have a discussion with THRED and see how we can move that forward.
Troy?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Colleen Sullivan Leonard and council, I'm glad you brought this up because I've had a pretty busy time, tail end of last week, trying to coordinate with THRED and speak this, kind of walk this through with them. As the proposal looks right now, there's, there was approximately 45 in the list that was provided by THRED. Of that 45, my office vetted out 17 that actually were in the boundaries of Wasilla. Of that 17, 16 complied with the licensing requirements associated to within those boundaries. That being said, six have received CARES funding through primarily the economic side of the prior- side of the prior phases that the city offered. In further discussion with Thread, a very arbitrary number was thrown out based upon an entity's capacity. And the total number of capacity, and again, these numbers are provided from Thread to myself, but it comes up to a total of 999. So, you know, you look at $1,000 per seat, if you will, talking 999,000. So, anyway, I just kind of threw out this $750 per, if you will. Thread was like, that's, that's very reasonable. And in that same discussion came the idea of how this would be vetted out. Thread has, well, let me say this first. ARPA funding is already available to Thread and Thread plans to piggyback the ARPA and the city at the same time. That's my concern number one. Concern number two, because CARES Act funding, and you've heard me say it many, many, many times, is there is a direct relatable correlation between the pandemic and CARES funding. It is absolutely need-based. Whereas, ARPA funding, yes, it's need-based, but it opens it up even more. And so, there's more that you can do with ARPA funding than you can with CARES funding. And so, I have that concern that you're trying to piggyback the two. Another concern I have is that Thread has no intention of vetting out, if you will, say, a childcare facility that received $20,000 worth of prior CARES funding to assist the city in vetting out. Have they expended it all? Do they still have some? Where do they stand? That kind of thing. I'm not asking that they go out and, you know, audit them or something like that. I'm not asking for that. But I do have concerns about that attestation. And then additionally, out of the other organizations we used, MEA, NSTAR, AHOC, none of them has charged an admin fee. And Thread is asking for a $10,000 admin fee to kick this out, in essence, to write 16 checks, which it seems odd. I mean, and even they attest to the fact that it's a little higher than their normal base. So, one of the things that I and my staff looked at today was, can the city, can my office vet out 16 applications based on some requirement of need? We looked at this before. Childcare facilities don't report sales tax, sales dollars to the city. They have to license with the city and stuff. So, that required us for them to show us economic need, if you will, through tax returns and profit and loss statements, that sort of thing, that the city can then vet out the need. And so, I'm basically letting council know that my office is willing for 16. We can call each and every one of them and attempt to speed this through as fast as we can through some application like we did before and help them get this spun around and still attest to their need. Another, another thing that came to light today was we had one of the facilities where Thread provided us a capacity count of 20. But when we called them, their capacity count was 90. So, it begs the question, the numbers in the capacity counts, I don't know if, you know, we don't have time to vet out, you know, capacity. So, I don't know if that should be used or not. So, anyway, I just have some overarching concerns as we're moving through this. And I also feel like trying to make a program fit for Thread, that I'm pounding a square peg through a round hole kind of concept. And so, anyway, it's just a thought as far as my office vetting that out.
Madam Mayor, so Troy, when you did speak with Stephanie Burgland, was there a discussion that, that the city could meet, meet that threshold of $750,000 with regard to the need in our community? You said there's 16. You've been able to figure out. What are you looking at then in the sense of a grant through the CARES Act for each childcare facility?
Well, what was talked about with Stephanie at Thread was the $750 per seat, if you will, based on capacity. Okay? And the capacity numbers came from Thread. So, you might have a capacity of 150, like I believe Denali Gymnastics had 150 for a capacity seat where, don't quote me on these, but I think, you know, the name just went right off my head. But some of them are down to 20 and some of them are at eight. So, the idea, and I was literally, it's an arbitrary number. Is it $500, $100, you know, that kind of thing. At $750, it's just very, just south of 750,000. But I did not build in $10,000 admin. So, I did not build that $10,000 in there. So, if it was at 750 or something like that went through, I'd have to adjust something to get it under that $750, yeah, $750,000 total.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I think that's doable. I mean, you know, just because other entities maybe didn't showcase how much they would charge for an administrative charge. I mean, we're kind of pushing Thread at the last minute. They've been doing this for quite some time. They know how to get the money down to the childcare facilities that, that need it based on the requirements of the CARES Act funding. And so, I'm hoping on the meeting coming up on the 30th that we can move forward with that then and have Stephanie here maybe for further discussion and see how we can move that forward. And if the $10,000 is within that cost, I mean, that's what you're doing with CARES Act funds. We've got still plenty of money. And if that's part of the cost with the money that's being dispersed, what is it, 10,000 into 750,000? Is that about 1%? Anyway, it's not, it's not a ton of money. But it's anticipated that you are going to have administrative costs for when these funds are going in. It's not city of Wasilla's money. This is CARES Act money coming from the federal side. So, administrative costs are going to be part of it. But again, I'm hoping that the city and Thread can have that discussion on the 30th and then figure out where we can move forward to help the childcare facilities that, that will qualify for this.
Right. Please, please, Council, don't misunderstand me when, when I talk about that administrative cost. The administrative cost doesn't necessarily bother me, other than to say that it seems quite expensive to write 16 checks. They already have the applications of the people with, with these childcare facilities that have responded to Thread in a prior manner for ARPA. So, that's what their intent is to do now is just say, oh, and by the way, in cooperation with the city of Wasilla, you also have the ability to receive funding through, through CARES funding. That's all fine and dandy, but as long as Thread complies with CARES Act, that's the important piece. And, and that's where I feel uncertain that that is truly the case and, and that a testament process is very important when it comes to the CARES Act. So...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm done.
Okay. Councilman Veloc.
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor. I also attended the conference last week. Councilmembers Graham and Sullivan Leonard pretty much covered it. We also did hear from Senator Murkowski on the infrastructure bill and how it will deliver for Alaska. They touched on that. And I also wanted to just mention that I am really happy that we are supporting our Wasilla area seniors. So, that was, that was a good move. And then, I'm also hoping we're able to distribute the remaining CARES Act funding towards needed in our communities and, of course, meet the required criteria. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening. We've got off the discussion on the first step through, through the ethics. I think there's a lot of details that is going to be needed for that. And I agree with other comments that we need to take our time going through it to make sure that we get it right. As far as COVID goes, COVID funding, I will not be able to meet the, on the 30th because I will be in the air at the time. So, my, my real concern is that we don't have this, oh my word, we have this money, we're going to give it away. We will give it away as quickly as we can and then only to discover that we really didn't meet all of the rules of the CARES Act and we are held liable for it. After all, I mean, my, my general feeling is the government really doesn't have money. The government takes our money and gives it to other people. So, we ought to be very careful about how we give the money away. Not that we don't want to help people that are truly in need, but I think that we ought to not rush into it and say, oh, let's just give it away so we don't have to give it back. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey.
No comments. Sorry, I was having problems getting the button pressed.
Okay, thank you. Of course, I attended AML. I am on the board of ACOM, which is the mayor's. So, Senator Murkowski zoomed in and she said they're going to extend, there's a bill in Congress to extend the CARES Act money to 2022. But she didn't say that it was only going to be for the tribes and for the, like, Siri and them. And the reason for that, Colleen found out, that was because they didn't get their money till August. So, the only question I have, the only concern I have about giving money to Thread is, are they going to assume responsibility for that money? That it's going to be dispersed according to CARES Act conditions?
To the mayor, right now, you know, we're working on a MOA with Thread. The understanding is the city, the city would obviously produce the legislation. Thread plans to use their existing application process that they've already built for ARPA. There's no attestation as far as prior CARES funding received, had it been spent, not spent, that sort of thing. And, and the statement of need doesn't appear. So, all that needs to be vetted out. However, in order for Thread to actually successfully get this money out, that's where these dates of this special meeting came into play is, if a council goes through a special meeting on the 30th, and then on December 1st, the city and Thread get the MOA completed, now we're on Wednesday. On Thursday, potentially, I could get the, depending on the time of day, get the money through ACH Wire and possibly at the latest, Thread needs that money by Friday for them to facilitate a program. But that's very fast, very, you know, and so, anything could happen along the way. And as far as the application goes, that still has got to be vetted out.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Okay, there are two executive sessions scheduled for this evening. And the time is 8:54. So, do I hear a motion to move these executive sessions to the 30th?
Madam Mayor, I move that we move the executive sessions to November 30th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made by Sullivan Leonard and seconded by Graham to move the special, the executive sessions to November 30th. Is there any objections?
Yes, this is Councilman Johnson. I am not going to be able to attend on the 30th as I will be going back to Alaska from Minnesota and will be flying through the day and the night.
Is there any other objections? Roll call vote.
Um, just from, I just wanted to add something. I, we're not going to be able to get these two items advertised on time.
For the 30th?
Correct. Because we're already on a deadline and we have the proof from the frontiersmen for the November 30th topic, which is only one topic.
Okay, can we move them?
December 13th would be the next regular meeting.
Madam Mayor, these executive sessions, was it your intent to be on November 30th? Because the negotiation executive session and the property one aren't even up for discussion for the November 30th.
Oh, okay. So...
Was it your intent to be November 30 or the December 13?
Well, my intent is to leave here by nine o'clock.
Negotiation executive session would be for the 13th of December. That one, I can tell you. As far as the property one, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. So, we can go to the, what, 8:16?
The next regular council meeting is scheduled for December 13th.
December 13th, yeah.
Okay. So, this is the motion for, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Colleen.
I did.
The motion to postpone the executive session items 14.1 and 14.2. I would like to read those into the record really quickly. 14.1 is the property located at 1400 South Cotton Drive. Owners, Daniel and Shirley Shaw. 14.2, union contract negotiations, specifically the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Wasilla Police Department Employees Association. The motion on the floor is to move these to the next regular meeting of December 13th, 2021. Councilmember Graham, how do you vote? On the motion to postpone?
Is that, was that the correct motion, Councilperson Leonard? Wasn't your motion different?
My motion was to move it's executive session to November 30th. They're asking to clarify, so they're changing the date to the 13th. So, I can reissue the motion, but I don't think...
I have no objections as long as we're legal. So, I vote yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Uh, we just clarified then. So, we're moving it to the next scheduled meeting. Is that correct?
The next regularly, the next regular city council meeting.
I vote yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Veloc?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
The motion passes with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Veloc, and Harvey in support and Councilmember Brown opposed.
Okay. All right. Is there any further business? Is there any further business to come before this council? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 8:59. Just under the wire.
James Harvey.
I've left.
Simon Brown.
I've left.
Ken Johnson.